And I want to welcome you to the very first Democrats of Greater Tucson Meeting of 2021. It's going to be a better year, it's going to be a blue year, and I just can't wait to get it going. And with that, Kathy, I understand you have a message. Kathy is our membership director on the board of Directors of DGT. Go ahead.
I am glad to go ahead. Hello, everyone, and Happy New Year to you. What fun it is to try and start off on a positive step or with a positive outlook, right? Now, of course, as membership person, I am going to have to say, and I say it happily, if you are not currently a member of DGT, you can do so and become a member very easily. Now, our councilwoman Nikki Lee and I were chatting just before the meeting, and she said she's been a member for many years, and that is true. I checked her records, but she hasn't had a chance to join just yet. So Nikki, what are you going to do about that?
Kathy, I'm going to be renewing my membership immediately following this meeting.
Okay, good stuff. Good stuff. And it's really easy. When you come into the dgt.org, it gives you a way you can easily get your membership, and we will be happy to have you with us. A number of you received emails from Larry and me, and you responded. And just like many of us, we're just, oh, yeah, I just forgot. So if you're one of those folks who has forgotten, get signed up now, okay? So again, Happy New Year, everyone, and I will give this back to Larry.
All right. Thanks very much, Kathy. We have Councilwoman Nikki Lee on the line with us today. Hello, Nikki.
Hello, Larry. Hi, everyone.
Nikki Lee is an Air Force veteran, an IT project manager, a wife, and a mother of three. She was elected in 2019 to represent Ward Four of Tucson, in Tucson, and that runs from 22nd Street South to Interstate 10. As a city council member, Nikki advocates for economic development, job growth, and environmental sustainability. She worked as an organizer for the Save Our Schools Arizona effort to keep public dollars in public schools. She aims to find innovative solutions to prepare our workforce for the future, incentivize responsible growth, and improve core city services. She will have her first city council meeting of 2021 on tomorrow, I understand, and she just got off the phone with the city manager. So tell us what we're in store for. Nikki, the floor is yours.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Larry. That's a great summary. I don't know if you pulled all that together or you got that from somewhere. That's very well done. Just want to thank you, Larry, for the invitation to be able to come and connect with you all. It's a great way to start 2021 after such a tumultuous year. I'm very optimistic. I think you all are as well. So I'm just grateful for the invitation and the opportunity to be with you all today. Okay, I feel like I have had the privilege of knowing many of you for several years now, so I wanted to just start off the year by sharing a quick picture and a Happy New Year to you all. This is a family photo we took at the end of last year, really trying to bring in the Biden-Harris excitement into our family photo shoot. My kids can't stand it. I can't go anywhere without something political, and this is just an example of that. But I'm happy to report that our family is all healthy. We've been doing as well as can be, given the pandemic. Our kids have all been at home, going to school from home like so many other children, so that's been really challenging for our family. And we're all very much looking forward to, hopefully, the fall. That's kind of what my mind's at in the fall, when it's safe and kids are able to go back into the classroom and do what they're doing. So our family is well, and we're just excited to share. I haven't shared this picture before, but again, you all are a special group of people, so I wanted to be able to share that with you all. And another, more good news to kind of share with you all, we have pups. So these two little girls here, Kaia and Koda, these are baby German Shepherd pups. Kaia is the puppy on the left-hand side with the teal collar over here on the office chair, and Koda is the one next to her. They are baby girls from the same litter. And I adopted Kaia, and my chief of staff, Teresa, adopted Koda. So we have some exciting puppies to share with everyone, and they've been very helpful in the office to bring a lot of joy into the office. So we'll be sharing what's going on with them in our social media. We shared a picture today, and they typically get a lot more likes than a lot of our policy conversations for some reason. So we'll continue to share cute puppy pictures because it makes people happy. So we will continue on with that. And before I get into talking about some of the other accomplishments and things that we've been able to achieve, I really wanted to take a moment. You know, I was off for the past, over the holiday, like many people, and had an opportunity to really reflect on this past year. And I really wanted to celebrate the things that this group, that the members of this group have made possible in 2020. We know we worked really hard to help turn Arizona blue for the first time since the 90s. Mark Kelly is now a senator locally, Rex Scott. You know, we won some key seats locally that were really heavy lifts. And it was in no small part thanks to your support, your investment in candidates, your ground game support. Those are the things that really moved the needle forward. So I just wanted to take a moment before I jump into the things that I've been working on to really acknowledge the accomplishments. There are a lot of school board members that you all supported that are getting sworn in today. Our new county recorder packed her lunch today, or yesterday, and went into her office for the first time today, thanks to a lot of the support from folks like you. So I just wanted to acknowledge your contribution to those accomplishments in 2020. And I really wanted to break out 2020 because I went into 2020 like a lot of people, you know, with my intentions, getting sworn in December 2019. I had my platform, what I really set out to do, and I compartmentalized that into three sections. You know, a stronger Tucson, which was really focused on our core services first and foremost, our roads, first responders, parks and recreation, making sure those are funded and those are working well for constituents, supporting small business and entrepreneurship in Tucson, and really looking at attracting new business and high-wage jobs because those are the vehicles for creating those opportunities for people to live good quality lives here in Tucson. So that was pillar number one. A smarter Tucson, as Larry mentioned, I come from a technology background, so I really wanted to be a part of helping to shape our workforce for the future, really looking at workforce development and using my technology background to understand how we could utilize technology to improve the way we're delivering our core services to residents of Tucson, and also how we're able to use technology to connect our public transit systems and make those more efficient and work better. And then sustainability. Ward Four is an area where there's a lot of growth happening. So looking at how we can do that in a responsible way, in an environmentally sustainable way, and then ultimately ensuring that we have the support of our city services, that we have our city services can support the growth that we're anticipating in some of these areas from a sustainability perspective. So that was really what I set out to do when I got into office. And I come back to these often because they're kind of a benchmark to me. What did I tell people I was going to do, and what am I actually doing? And ultimately, the undercurrent to all of this was really to be accessible and responsive to constituents. And we saw time and time again with the pandemic, with civil unrest, with a lot of different issues that came up in 2020, being responsive to constituents really went a long way for people to know that they were heard and that their voices really matter. So that's really what I set out to accomplish when I ran for office and when I took office. And as we all know, 2020 kind of threw us a few curveballs, to say the least. But what I set out to do and what I accomplished was I learned a lot about the job. There's a lot of departments, the inner workings of city government. It's a lot to learn. So I spent this first year, 2020, really learning and building out those relationships that I needed to be able to build to be able to be successful in this role. We launched our Ward Four newsletter, which most offices have a newsletter, but there hadn't been one, I think, for many years. So when we sent this out, when we created the content and sent this out, we got a lot of reaction that people were happy to hear, you know, that happy to finally hear what we were working on, just because it had not been, you know, there was just a lot of other things going on, and we didn't have the ability to get one out before. So that was a really good communication tool that we're happy to have going on a regular basis now. Our team delivered 4,000 masks to schools in Ward Four. We knew early on that making sure that teachers and students and teaching support staff were going to be really important, so we made sure and delivered those directly to the schools in addition to other mask donation drives that were happening throughout the city. And there was also, as many of you probably know, a shortage of blood donations due to COVID-19 because people were not going in to get blood as regularly due to people staying at home. So we did a Ward Two blood challenge. We challenged Ward Two to a blood drive, and we lost by one pint, I think. We filled out all of our appointment times, but there was one person, I think, who wasn't able to donate. So we, let's just say we tied, but we helped to contribute to that goal of getting more blood donated. We set out to do multiple town halls before COVID hit. We were able to quickly shift to do these online. I know all of us have transitioned the way that we do our meetings. I'm looking forward to getting back to doing things in person, but we were able to hold four virtual town halls in 2020, all around core services, and then one about Tucson Medical Center that's doing a very large expansion out here in Ward Four, and we'll finally have some of those medical services, like obstetrics, that a lot of people have access to. And out here where I live, if you go into labor, you have to drive about 30 minutes away to get to the hospital. So, or you have birth in a Target parking lot. You know, that's also an option. So having obstetrics out here is some really exciting stuff. So we did a town hall to let people know what was coming out here in terms of development. And again, the reputation for constituent response. Our team knows that it's definitely a priority that people get responses. We had different incidents where we were flooded with literally hundreds, if not thousands, of emails a day at times. So we had to really innovate in how we were going to respond to everyone. But it's really my personal belief that if people take the time to write their elected official, they need to know that they've been heard. In some way, they need to know that we've received their information and we appreciate their advocacy. And so that is something that we will continue to do, and it's something that's very important for me. So that is the number one priority, and our team did a fantastic job of making sure that that's happened in 2020. And having an IT background that proved to be very helpful this year or last year. And, you know, we went from a normal workforce with the city of Tucson, where everybody came into the office, to having to work remotely for the folks who were able to. We still have a lot of our first responders, our environmental services folks that do the recycle and the trash pickup, and just a lot of workers who were not able to work remotely. But for those that were, there was a big exponential need to get technology deployed very rapidly and get systems on board to allow them to keep working so we could continue delivering core services to people during the pandemic. And so I was able to help kind of provide some insight into that. And then, as many of you may have seen in the news, the citywide Wi-Fi program is something I'm really passionate about. This sets out to address the digital divide, which is basically where individuals or families don't have access to the internet at home, and that has become more and more critical now with students having to, you know, go to school from home or people having to be online to look for work because their work may have been impacted from the pandemic. So helping to shrink that gap and get more and more people connected online in their homes was very important. So we worked very closely with our IT department, with the mayor's office, to really look at how we could put a system, get a system online that would allow city residents who are low-income to be able to connect online at no cost to them. So that pilot program is up and running right now, which is very exciting, very exciting. I didn't think that a pandemic would be a catalyst to do something like this, but it has been, and it's been really awesome to watch that roll out. Another piece that is also kind of a passion project of mine is bringing some material, bringing some training curriculum to leadership within the city of Tucson. This is through the Arbinger Institute, but I believe that, you know, our mindset determines our behaviors and how we approach work. So when we're looking at how we can best communicate with our constituents, how we can best work with each other within the city government and external to the city government, we need to invest in our people. And so I was able to work with the city manager in his office to bring the Arbinger Institute material into the city of Tucson. So we're in the process of rolling that out to provide training and coaching to the executive leadership team and throughout the organization, hopefully in the next couple of years, to give people some tools to do their job more effectively and to find more fulfillment in their work. And that will ultimately, I believe, provide a lot of value to the city of Tucson residents as a result. So that is, those are just some very exciting things that I have been a part of, and they will continue on. So for 2021, my team and I have a survey online right now for anyone who is in Ward Four. I really like to take people's feedback and synthesize that to find out what is most important to them for us to be focusing on in terms of goals. I've got my top three pillars that will remain consistent, but we have a survey that's open, that's out there for everyone to be able to complete right now to help us guide specific, if there are specific problem areas that need attention. We're actively looking for that feedback. We're going to continue working on the Smart City Initiative, continuing to build that out and looking for opportunities. One of the areas that I particularly am excited to bring my skill set to is bringing stakeholders to the table in the technology space. We have a lot of different organizations, companies, looking at how they address the digital divide or workforce development, but we're not all necessarily talking to each other. So one company, Cox, might be over here doing something, and the city of Tucson's over here doing something, and Comcast is doing something. And getting everybody together to talk and say, how can we work together? Or who's doing what? And better align some of those efforts around addressing the same problem is one of the items that I'm going to be working heavily on this year. And then, this hasn't been announced yet, but again, you guys are a special group. So I have, the city of Tucson as a whole is a member of the National League of Cities, which is a federal kind of advocacy group for cities and towns across the US. And I am taking a much more active role in 2021 in that organization on behalf of the city. So I'll be involved in the Military Communities Council, the Universities Council, and the IT and Communications. And the exciting news is that I was appointed as the vice chair, so I'll be in a leadership role of the Military Communities Council. So that's very exciting. I'll be able to do a lot of advocacy work for military communities here in Tucson and other communities across the country at a federal level and really make sure that our voice is heard for university issues, IT issues, and just issues in general at a national level as we're working on those different items. So the press release, I think they're going to be sending something out pretty soon about that, but I'm really excited to take that to the next level and serve in an additional capacity. So overall, though, like a lot of you, not that I'm counting, but if I were counting, we have 15 days, 22 hours, no, 21 hours and 35 minutes until we have President Biden sworn in, so I'm ready for that. I'm hopeful, I'm optimistic about that for several reasons. I think that, you know, this last stimulus package did not include funding for cities, and President-elect Biden did address National League of Cities during our city summit in November and told the members there that cities and towns will have a seat at the table in his administration. So that made me very hopeful. I know that we're going to have a voice, that we're going to be heard, which is going to be really important. And also having Pete Buttigieg in charge of Transportation Department, coming from a space of leading cities, I think is really going to move us forward in terms of some of the infrastructure needs that we have. Last time I met with our Transportation Department, I was told that 79% to 80% of our roads in Tucson are in failing condition. And we're looking at hundreds of millions of dollars needed to get those fixed. So we need massive investment in infrastructure, and it's not just going to be able to come from our tax base, as we know. So I'm very hopeful, I'm very optimistic that with this new administration, the priorities are going to be different. We already know there's going to be adults in the room, and it's going to be a good thing. So I'm hopeful for that. 15 days and 21 hours. And then ultimately, in closing, I just want to give a huge thank you to DGT for everything that you guys do for our community, for us as candidates when we are candidates. I'm not here as a candidate, which feels great right now. I'm just here just getting to talk to you all without having to ask you for anything, which is wonderful. But I just want to thank every one of you for what you do in your focus areas. It does not go unnoticed. And last but not least, before I turn it back over to Larry for questions, I would love for you all to stay connected. Again, if I have to bribe you with puppies, I will. We'll have puppy pictures coming out regularly. But I have a Facebook page, my official Facebook page, and it's very frustrating because I couldn't get the same URL for each platform for some reason. So we have three different names, but we're on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and then we have our Ward Four newsletter. Feel free to sign up and connect that way. And I really look forward to staying connected with everyone as we go into this new year.
All right, we have a number of questions. So you can ask questions live by just going into the Participants icon and clicking on the raised blue hand. And also got a question by email, so why don't we get started with Barbara Warren? Barbara, go ahead and ask your question.
Hi, Nikki. What a wonderful job you're doing. I wanted to ask you how you are going to address environmental sustainability very specifically in as many ways as possible. That's going to be a lot hotter, as always, soon, and our weather's changing in many ways, and we need to be really proactive. What are your plans?
Yeah. Well, it's nice to see you, Barbara. It's good to see you again. You're right. It's very concerning to see right in front of us what's happening. The climate is changing. We didn't have much of a monsoon season at all. The temperatures, I mean, it's in our face what's changing. Some of the things that I'm working on with my team in the background and with my colleagues are around a couple of things. The first one is, as we know, with recycling specifically, we have an issue with glass right now. I know this is kind of somewhat random, but it's something that we've been actively looking at is instead of glass being thrown in the landfill, how can we look at what secondary markets are for recycled glass? This is not a very sexy topic, I apologize, but it is one that has some opportunity for us because we want to look at reducing waste and what is going into the landfills and staying there forever. So from an environmental perspective, we're actively talking to folks in Phoenix, looking at possible regional approaches. Every city is dealing with this specific issue, so we're along with everybody else trying to figure out how we're going to deal with that. The mayor also has the Million Trees Plan. We have some plans to do the same thing and work for. We've got different areas identified with plans actively being developed for where we're going to help contribute to planting more trees, to help draw carbon down out of the atmosphere, shade, help to address some of the heat effect that we're experiencing, continuing to look at water conservation options, and incentives is going to be key to that. And those are just a couple of the specific things that are at the top of my mind as we look at what we're going to be able to do. It's definitely something, it is the issue, I would say, of all that keeps me up at night, is, you know, for my kids and for everyone's kids, how are we going to make sure that when we hand the keys over to the city, to them, that it's something that's inhabitable? And Barbara, as you know, I'm always, always open for new ideas. I know that workers' protection is something that's important for you, for heat. I know that I've talked to the mayor about that after meeting with you on something within the city that we could do to address protection for workers from heat because that problem is just going to continue to, you know, there's going to be more and more 100-degree days as we move forward. So I'm always open for additional ideas.
Jackie Romer has a question. Go ahead, Jackie.
Okay. Hi. Yeah, I really enjoyed this presentation a lot. I'm really new to all this. I want to know, what is Tucson doing to, in the event of an emergency grid failure in summer, to get people into safe locations with generators in buildings?
I really appreciate your question. I'm writing it down because I don't exactly have the answer right now. I think part of that is going to be a question for TEP in terms of redundancy for their power grid. You know, how are they managing that to make sure that their grid stays accessible and available? I know they do have a lot of redundancy, also from a, since you opened the door about cybersecurity, and I'm a big nerd, I'm going to walk right through it. But I do know that TEP has a lot of cybersecurity professionals because they're a big target, right? Massive target. So I think that's a question also with TEP to understand redundancy and security with their system. But that's also a good question. If that fails, what then, right? So I wrote that down because I actually don't, I don't have an answer to that right now. But I would love to find out because that is a great question with not just faulty equipment, but just in general.
All right. Andrea Kennedy has a question. Go ahead, Andrea.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, Nikki, for such a great presentation. I would like you to say more about citywide Wi-Fi. I was so disappointed when the city didn't bring in fiber optic citywide. Could you tell us more, especially eligibility, about what you do know about it? Thank you.
Okay. It's good to see you two virtually. And some of this is somewhat technical on the Cox communications piece and other internet service providers because I know that there is existing infrastructure by other internet service providers that I'm using right now. And I believe that Cox Communications, I believe, has fiber throughout the entire city of Tucson. And so what this is doing is making available Wi-Fi through city buildings. So basically, we're taking maybe a fire station, we're mounting a piece of equipment on it, and we're sending devices. So if a person qualifies who is low-income, they will get a device in their home, and I don't have one, but it's probably about this big. And it basically will be able to read that signal from the tower, and it converts it to a Wi-Fi signal to your computer. When you go to connect to the internet, it will show your Wi-Fi signal. Right now, we don't have full coverage across the entire city. There's additional poles that they'll want to put up on city property and stuff like that to be able to scale it. This was just kind of an initial pilot to get it into areas where there were higher need, more lower-income families, and possibly where there was less internet options. So there are some gaps where there might not be service coverage from a Cox or Comcast or simply bits. And we wanted to make sure that families in those areas were not left behind. So I can fit out, or I can ask someone from my team to drop the pilot link into the chat. There we go. Teresa just dropped it in there, and it's got the criteria for applying. So people who do meet the criteria can apply to be able to utilize the free internet that we have through the pilot. Does that answer your question?
Kind of, yeah, especially seeing, being able to see the criteria. I actually had a second question, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
It's, okay. So in my neighborhoods, there's someone, they're putting up this poll with what looks like speakers on top, and the label on it says something about Verizon. What are those for?
Those might be 5G small cell towers. I'm not sure. You may want to talk to the Verizon folks.
Okay.
If it said City of Tucson, I would... If it said City of Tucson, I would have my team dig into that. But if it's Verizon, I would probably defer to them because I don't really know what their equipment looks like.
Okay.
To be honest with you.
Probably is Verizon, since you don't know about it, so, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a question from Gail Camaras. Gail, unmute yourself and ask your question.
Hi, I just wanted to know if you have any information about the status right now of the citywide tree planting project and how people can get involved in that?
Hi Gail, I miss you. I miss all of you. I don't have a count of the number of trees that have been planted versus the number that we want to plant. But that is a fantastic question and one that we definitely need to find out so that we know how we're measuring against that goal. In terms of, and Gail, you live in Ward Four, right? Or you too?
I'm in Two.
You're in Two, okay. I knew you were right in that area. We have, we're going to be doing some tree planting in Lincoln Park and some other areas and some neighborhoods, helping some neighborhoods get those efforts launched. But Gail, I'm going to follow up with you because one of the things we're working on this year is partnering with the neighborhood associations to try to get them to launch some tree planting projects. And we'll help coordinate some of that with Resources Tucson, clean up, get the trees to them and stuff like that, and help them navigate that process. And really get the neighbors on board with planting trees in their neighborhood and make sure they have the resources to do that. So Gail, I'll censure in Ward Two, I'll either, you know, get the information to you or connect you so that you guys have that. So if there are certain areas where you know that that would be a good place for a lot of trees within a neighborhood, or if there are upcoming of Cuny Hams doing some stuff in there, or if we're doing some stuff in Ward Four and you want to come hang out with us, which we'll bring the puppies, just to make it fun. We'll make sure you know about that stuff. Because that's definitely one of the goals for us, is to plant a lot of trees in 2021. We have room for it in Ward Four.
All right, Barbara Warren has another question. Go ahead Barbara.
I work with Physicians for Social Responsibility, and we've had a program that you may know about called Building Resilient Neighborhoods to extreme weather events. And since the question came up about how do we deal with being safe in extreme heat, I wanted to let you know that we have a large number of copies of a little booklet called A Citizen's Guide, which provides information for homeowners or homes or people about what they can do to be ready or prepared in their homes for power outage and extreme, in the event of extreme heat. I'm wondering if you would like to have those booklets in your office and maybe we put them in all the council offices to distribute within your community?
We would love that, we would love that Barbara, for sure.
Great, because they're just sitting in my garage and they're not doing any good there. Because we haven't been able to have a lot of workshops for a long time, so.
That would be amazing. We can make sure to get those out and to get that information out, too. Even take pieces of that and share it on social media as we're, you know, putting our content plan together. Because I am worried for what the summer is going to be like, I really am.
The other piece we have to offer is that we now offer our workshops digitally. We can do it on Zoom and just needs to gather a group of people who can get on the computer in their homes and participate. And that's the biggest challenge, is access to our community through, as you mentioned, Wi-Fi and in neighborhoods and homes that don't have computers.
Absolutely, and if you have that information Barbara, and you want to send it to us at Ward Four at TucsonAZ.gov, we'll make sure and pump that information out, too, so that more people are aware. Because that sounds like a fantastic opportunity.
Great, thank you.
All right, we have a question from Josephine Kelleher. Please unmute yourself and ask your question.
Thanks Larry, excellent presentation Lee, thank you. I live downtown, and before COVID, I was a bus warrior. So public transportation is my thing. Did I read correctly that Tucson is aiming for an all-electric fleet soon? And if so, how soon?
That is a good question on the timeline. We are definitely, a lot of us, you know, we want to get to renewable energy, for sure. So I don't know what the timeline is like, what we're shooting for, but every time we evaluate anything that comes before us, those are the questions that we're asking. When we're looking at purchasing, we're looking at purchasing renewable vehicles for our fleets, for our, we use compressed natural gas, which I know is not electric, for our environmental services vehicles. So we're always looking at how we can move into a better position in terms of using renewable, more sustainable sources. So I put a note to myself, we'll find out what, you know, what's in the plan for trying to get, you know, move to completely electric fleet in the future.
Can I ask a follow-up Larry?
Go ahead.
Okay, it's wonderful that you're now going to have a seat at the federal table Nikki. Public transportation in any city is not going to make it without massive improvements in public aid. So I hope you bang your fists on that table for public transportation in the cities.
Absolutely, and you know, the mayor has said, and it's absolutely true, had it not been in 2020 for federal assistance, our transportation system would not have been able to be what it was. There was no federal, you know, there was no consideration for cities in this last stimulus package. But knowing that the new administration is coming in, that's what gives me hope. Because they understand and value public transportation and infrastructure. So I will bang my fist away, I will be as loud as possible to make sure that those priorities are heard for us, absolutely.
Thank you Nikki.
Thank you.
Okay, Joe Danishevsky, please, go ahead, you have a question.
Very good, you pronounce that very well, sir. Nikki, thanks so much for being here. I'm a newbie. I've lived in another, many places in the country and in my work, and I saw municipal government firsthand work in Indianapolis and Las Vegas. Las Vegas is more law enforcement than anything. Is there any joint committee between Pima County and the city to basically ask if there could be some joint services in law enforcement?
You know, I know that there's a good relationship with our sheriff and with our police chief in terms of communication, collaboration. I am not currently aware of any joint kind of police force or joint force between the two at this time. I know that one of the things that we're kind of talk, just preliminarily thinking about is different specialties like the helicopter units, right? Because those are kind of specialty, would there possibly be opportunities to collaborate on that? And that would save some money for taxpayers because we're able to just have one that services both the county and the city. So I know that we're definitely talking about those ideas, especially on those specialty-level capabilities. But I did take a note to think about that. I'm not, I'm not sure at this point if there is anything like that that exists. I do know, again, that the relationship, the communication is good between the two, and they work very well together when they need to. But I appreciate you bringing that up. That's definitely something to keep at the front as we move forward.
Yeah, and I would say that the library system now, that we used to have city libraries and county libraries, and now it's all county libraries. From my perspective, that seemed to be a smart move.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I just, I was just thinking about missing going to the library when you said that because we have to preorder books online and go pick them up right now. But yeah, yeah, well, I appreciate that idea, yeah.
All right, we have a question from Paul Stapleton Smith. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Paul, and ask a question.
Thank you, thank you Larry. And Nikki, thank you for everything you've been doing from childcare, all of the things that you've been doing at City Council on our behalf. And I just came off of an eviction prevention coalition meeting that I do weekly, dealing with really powerful agencies doing great work for our communities. And one of the things that's the key, of course, is the ability for people to make money in an economy that is, well, so much of it is virtually paralyzed. The fifteen-dollar wage adjustment that you just, that you guys just did at City of Tucson, please tell me, first of all, what propelled you to do that? Second of all, what is the impact across the rest of our communities and the rest of our economic sectors here in Tucson and Pima County from that significant move?
Yeah, well, Paul, it's great to see you and thank you for your work on that with eviction prevention. That is something, the other thing that keeps us up at night besides the climate change is knowing that once the moratoriums, you know, and people are starting to lose their homes, how are we going to be able to help these individuals? And with the CARES Act funding, the vast majority of the funds that we received from the federal government went directly to workers and families, to small businesses, to, you know, the stages. We put that money back into the community, which was really important. And it's going to be really important that another stimulus package that comes out through the new administration includes that we directly can help those individuals who need it the most. And I know that we all wish we could have done even more. In terms of the fifteen-dollar an hour, that was for City of Tucson workers bringing everybody up to that minimum. I don't know what the numbers look like for the overall economic impact, you know, to the city as a result of putting more money in people's pockets. It was definitely a priority from previous mayor and council to do that. Current mayor and council clearly felt that it was a priority. And hopefully, it's a signal, you know, to lead by example that at a minimum, this is what people should be bringing home. So I think that that was an important signal to the community until we get there. And Paul, does that answer your question, or was there another piece of it?
No, I think it does. I mean, it's really for someone who worked, I worked on the original Minimum Wage statewide initiative and family leave and sick leave. And it's just an amazing thing to happen in the state that we live in. And I not only commend you for it, but as we're working with workers through, across the economic sectors here in Pima County. It really, I just, I want to thank you for that, and I suspect everybody on this call understands, there's going to be reverberations and impact from that move. And it's not some small thing that you did at an especially critical time, but it's commendable, and we think it's going to have, on behalf of organized labor and unions, it's going to do tremendous good, again, at a time when everybody needs every nickel to support their families and keep that money moving through the economy. So thank you. I don't know how big a lift it was vis-à-vis the city manager and other elements out there politically, but God bless you for doing that. And on behalf of all of those workers and their families, thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Paul. Honestly, it was the easiest of decisions for 2020. No one was against it, everyone, you know, I think we all wish we could have done more because we know how hard it is for people. And honestly, is fifteen-dollar an hour enough for anybody, right? I mean, there's so many conversations that we could have, but, you know, it was by far the right thing to do. Absolutely, so thank you, Paul.
All right, Lillian, Lillian Fox has a question. Go ahead, Lillian, ask away.
Yeah, TUSD has solar in every single school and all their installations. And the City of Tucson started down the path towards solar way before TUSD did. But I don't know if you've gone all solar yet. So my question is, has the City of Tucson gone all solar? Do you have solar in every single building installation?
I will find out about every single building. What I do know is that a lot of our parking lots, like at the Ward Four office, which is next to the Clement Center, we have solar-covered parking. So we've got the panels up there. I don't know what percentage of our buildings have already been enabled for solar and what percentage haven't. I know there's been a lot of work with, you know, replacing bulbs, traffic lights, different things, to look at every possible switch that we can flip to look at conservation and sustainability. But Lillian, if you want, I can try to find out from our facilities, folks, what percentage we're at and, you know, what's left to do to get to that goal. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question for you concerning COVID-19. Something like seventy-four thousand people in Pima County have the virus. And the hospitals are full, the ICUs are full. Nikki, tell us a little bit more about what the city is doing to fight COVID.
Yeah, so Larry, that, I guess I do have three things that keep me up at night, besides my kids, would be four. But that is another one. Early on, we started, we, mayor and council, started talking with the city manager, looking at additional facilities, like the TCC, to be utilized by, essentially would be the governor's office by the state, to put up field hospitals. We know that actual physical space is not so much a problem for the hospitals as staff is. So they need the people, people are getting burnt out. So we have, you know, all of the paperwork done and to the governor's office to allow him to use the TCC as a field hospital overflow if needed. In addition to, you know, the mayor, you know, mask mandates early on, we'll continue to try to lead in that area. I had a call, as you mentioned Larry, with the city manager just before this call, talking about now, you know, really vaccination, what does that look like? How quickly is that going to get out? And that's really a county thing, but I was talking to him in the context of city essential workers are going to get their vaccines. So that's really the name of the game right now, is how do we keep people with their masks on, you know, minimizing their own exposure while getting as many people vaccinated as quickly as possible? So we'll continue, you know, as new science, new guidelines come out, we'll continue to align ourselves with that. And any policy changes that need to come from that, we will stay on top of. The mayor and council have been very much in alignment with those from day one. So we'll continue that. And I just, I've never been more excited to get a shot in my life. When it's my turn, I'll be there, you know, it'll be a good day when it's safe for things to return to normal, for sure.
All right, let me call on Sandy Dennyam, our board member in charge of membership of programming. She has an announcement. Go ahead Sandy.
Hi, thank you, and thank you Nikki. And please thank your staff, particularly Patty Petzl, who helped me set this up for you to speak today. I wanted to remind everybody that next week, next Monday, we will have Bonnie Heidler, who is the new chairperson of Pima County Democratic Party, to tell us what the future is for the, in the coming year and hopefully beyond. We know that this year, we're going to have at least an election of council people for the city, Tucson, I'm not sure of anything else. And there's going to be some redistricting issues that are going to come up. So hopefully, we will see everybody next Monday, and thank you.
Awesome, we have one last question from Suzie Anderson, and then Nikki, I'll ask you to wrap up. Go ahead Suzie.
Welcome to DGT. We are strong and active and not going to let the Trumpers undo all the good things we're trying to do. But Nikki, I was wondering, I've been to Ward Six, where Steve Kosicek has a big bin for glass. Is it okay if, when you drop your glass in, that it's broken?
It's, I don't know for sure, but I think it's okay.
It's okay if the glass is broken? Oh, okay. They're going to crush it anyway. Okay, thank you so much, Betsy.
With that, Nikki, we've run out of time. It's been a really interesting meeting. Everybody's enjoyed hearing from you. Why don't you give us a conclusion and take us out on a thought you'd like us to keep in mind?
Yeah, yeah, well, thanks again for the invitation to be here today to start out the new year with all of you. I appreciate, this group always has great thoughtful questions, so I always appreciate being able to spend time with you all. I would just say, you know, I would just say, you know, we're almost out of it. I know that, I'm saying this so I can remind myself of it, but we're almost there. I am so much looking forward to a day where the adults are back in the White House after they sanitize the heck out of every square inch of that space. They're back there. I think that things are just gonna feel so much, so much better. We're gonna see so much progress. So just hang in there, keep doing what you're doing, stay healthy. Thank you for all of your hard work in 2020 to get so many amazing people elected and to really make it possible for us to be celebrating again in 15 hours, 21, no, 15 days, 21 hours, and 34 minutes. So I want to know so much and take care.
Thank you so much for your time and for your presentation.